City Clerk, you want to call the roll? Oh wait, but I got to open the council meeting, the financing, housing and the power authority meetings.
Okay.
Call the roll.
I'll do the roll call for the council, financing, housing and power. Councilmember Authority Member Crist.
Present.
Mann.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Perez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Turn it over to Councilman Crist or Chairman Crist of the redevelopment agency. Called to order the redevelopment agency, could we get the roll call please?
Agency Director Mann.
Present.
Zetto.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Chairman Crist.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation tonight is Pastor John Metters from Christian Life Assembly.
Let's stand and pray. Our Father in Heaven, hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come, your will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us today our daily bread, forgive us our debts, as we also have forgiven our debtors, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from the evil one. Lord Jesus, we thank you that we can come before you tonight. I pray for our leaders that you would protect them, protect their families, give them wisdom, guide their decisions, Lord. Father, I pray that there be open discussion, but that all the discussion would honor you and that in the end, there would be unity in our city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Councilman Mann, you want to do the pledge of allegiance?
Everybody would face the flag, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which the saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's start with the Jacob Hefter Foundation. We're going to play a video first. Come on over here.
Hi, my name is Allen Hefter, part of the Jacob Hefter Foundation. My son Jacob Hefter was in the September 12th, 2008 train tragedy down in Chadworth, California. He's a, he was a, he was taken from us and in his honor, we started a foundation. Our foundation is to bring out the message about texting and driving, how important it is not to text and drive. You can go to that website, we've created a foundation, a website, it's called the Jacob Hefter Foundation dot org. We have an email, J F H forty-niners at yahoo dot com. You can get the message, I mean, we're just, please don't text and drive, it's very important because your actions could affect other people, your family, friends and neighbors, and people you don't even know and if you take the life or hurt somebody else, it affects many, many people, not just the one that you hurt.
On September 12th, 2008, Annalow Valley's Jacob Hefter lost, tragically lost his life in a MetroLink accident due to the driver or the engineer of the train texting while he was operating the train. The Jacob Hefter Foundation started in Jacob's memory, exhorts people to make wise choices in life, including never texting while driving. Yesterday, the foundation held its annual, I guess it was last week because we were disrupted with the bomb situation. The foundation held its annual texting and driving awareness day in collaboration with several participating Chili's restaurants, including the one here in Lancaster. Today, we'd like to thank the Hefter Foundation for raising awareness of the dangers of texting and driving and encouraging people to make positive decisions in life. How many people here have texted and drove? Come on, come on, how many? You know, it's, how many have read a text while they were driving?
No.
You know, the, the reality of that is, that is worse than drunk driving. Not, not as bad, it's worse than drunk driving. And yet, I constantly see people in my own family do that. It, it is, it is beyond, you know, it's like we have this inability to not respond to that, that machine in our pocket. And I would suggest to all of you, if you have kids, teach them to put it in the trunk. Because I can absolutely guarantee you, all of the studies indicate that eighteen-year-olds, sixteen-year-olds, they cannot resist that cellphone once it dings. I have, I, I, I know a mother who texted her daughter, her daughter looked at the text and died. And none of you would like to, to be in that situation. The Hefters have, have put an enormous amount of energy into this, and I think if, if all of us here would just vow to just stop doing that, it would be a step in the right direction. Thank you.
You didn't know I was going to chew him out, did you? Okay. Here we go. Let's just get some pictures.
We'd just like to say that the foundation, sorry. The foundation appreciates the support from the communities. We live in the city of Palmdale, and they've been very supportive to our cause of bringing the awareness out, the city of Lancaster and the mayor and the council members, the residents of the city of Lancaster have been very supportive as well. We've been out to two public events. We started in June with an eighty-four blazer that was Jacob's car, that we decided to make it a movable message. And we have now, we have people give the opportunity to make pledges to not text and drive and put their signature on the car. And we've, to date, have over twenty-five-hundred signatures from people of all ages. And this man's like, did you just sign it? Good. And it's just, we just don't want to see people suffer the same tragedy that we have. And we are making efforts to get out to the public school systems, private school systems, more into the community, but we wanted to say thank you to the city of Lancaster for opening your arms to us and helping us get the message out. Thank you.
Next, we have, we have the four hundred and eighteenth Flight Test Squadron, and you also were supposed to do this last week, right? You had more people last week than, uh, this is Lieutenant Clifton Jenny, sir.
Lieutenant Colonel.
Lieutenant Colonel, that's right, a big difference.
Commander of the four hundred and eighteenth Flight Test Squadron, Edwards Air Force Base, we recognize the four hundred and eighteenth Flight Test Squadron for twenty years of flight testing the C seventeen Globemaster, which is the biggest aircraft out there, isn't it?
Second largest. The C five is still bigger. This one just has a tactical capability the C five does not have.
I see, okay. Setting more than twenty-five world records in the C seventeen, their efforts led to the C seventeen now being utilized extensively for the air mobility support of the war on terror and also used in humanitarian aid missions around the world. So we got the biggest and the second biggest.
Right.
Do we have the third biggest too?
Well, if you're looking at worldwide, why, actually, the Russians have the largest.
Yeah, but they can't maintain theirs.
They don't, they can't fly it. If you're going to actually include that it has to fly, then we got them all.
Okay, good. We would like to thank the four hundred and eighteenth Flight Test Squadron for their exceptional service to Annalow Valley region and indeed to our entire nation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Got it?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. And if I could.
Yeah.
We'd like to reciprocate, you know, Edwards and Lancaster have longstanding history of mutual support, and these are just watering holes out here. And in recognition of that, we have had a plaque made that says, "The City of Lancaster in recognition of continuous support of Edwards Air Force Base." It has the C seventeen twentieth anniversary patch as well as the coin. It was actually flown on C seventeen T one, which is the first C seventeen, on fifteenth September of 2011, which is the twenty-year anniversary, and signed by myself.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate everything the community does for us.
Thank you.
And of course, when I say I appreciate the community, it's all of you out there that make all this happen, so thank you very much.
Okay, and now Paul Finley. Paul Finley has been a city employee since 2001, he's a light equipment mechanic. We'd like to reckless, recognize him for his selfless act of courage and bravery in saving the life of another. On August tenth, Paul witnessed a horrific car accident on his way home. A vehicle had been struck from behind, bursting into flames. The driver was left unconscious in the burning vehicle and the door was jammed. Paul removed the window, pulled the man to safety, saving his life. Could you imagine that? That's incredible. Thank you so much, Paul. Mayor, Mayor, Paul has his family here too, maybe we can get a picture with the family. Oh yeah, come on up. What, you got the kids too? These are your kids?
Yes.
You guys got to be incredibly proud.
Only three of them.
Only three?
More.
You got six kids.
I'm not going to see three of them every day. But this is, okay guys.
That's true.
All right. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, the consent calendars consist of items of routine business for which minimal or no discussion or special presentation is contemplated or required. These items may be acted upon as a whole with one motion, a second and a single vote. If you desire to speak on an item or items on the consent calendar, you may fill out one speaker card for the consent calendar. You will be given three minutes to address your concerns before the agency or council takes action on the consent calendar. All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the consent calendar being called. This same rule applies if you wish to speak on other items on the agenda and non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. City Manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm turning the meeting over to Chairman Crist for the redevelopment agency.
Do we have a motion for the adoption of the agency minutes?
So moved to adopt the minutes as currently comprised.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Okay. It's four nothing. Okay, we're going to hear a staff report from Barbara Boswell, R N B one.
Good evening, Mayor and Chairperson and Agency Directors. The item before you now is an update to the enforceable obligation payment schedule that you, we were required to adopt last month. At the time we adopted it, we knew that as time went by, we would need to amend it on a regular basis to reflect obligations and payments that are upcoming because unless the payments are on the schedule, we're not able to make those payments. So this is an item that will probably become a bit routine over the next several months, you'll see it regularly, and this reflects required changes and obligations we've have since the last time you saw it. And I'm welcome, I will welcome any questions you may have.
Any questions? We have two speaker cards, Michael Reeves.
Mayor Perez, members of the council, staff.
Actually, so we're clear.
The attachment to R N B.
Reeves?
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Just one second. Can you start this time over? Just so we're clear, I'm not on the redevelopment agency, so you should really address it to Chairman Crist. Okay. I'm just sitting here, I'm a potted plant for the next five minutes.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
Thank you. No, stay there, stay there. You just addressed the mayor.
Okay.
Okay. Can you start this time over? Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Perez, council and staff. The attachment to this R N B one states that adoption of this resolution does not take a position on two eleven redevelopment legislation, which is A B twenty-six and A B twenty-seven. And because I'm a citizen and I'm not a party to, on the council, I'm a party to government, I can make a comment on it. And you know my feelings about the redevelopment situation. Because the redevelopment legislation is coming up for review by the California Supreme Court in January, the court has stayed implementation of provisions of the redevelopment legislation, A B twenty-six and twenty-seven, except the part about the enforceable obligation payment schedule. And coming up this week on Saturday, effective October first, 2011, under state legislation, all redevelopment agencies, which are four hundred of them in California, are dissolved. That means that we have four hundred agencies in the state that had a possibility of creating jobs and economy of unemployment, of twelve-point-one unemployment, and they're being dissolved by the state of California. And as a citizen, I'm very dismayed, and I'm sorry, and I'm sorry that in order to have a redevelopment agency in the city, we're going to have to pay a hefty fee every year. And I can only hope that the California Supreme Court in January recognizes that Proposition Twenty-two passed by the voters of California is valid. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you.
I'd like to point out, since you decided to point out, you are not a potted plant, but you are a person who was a part of the redevelopment agency, who got caught in a conflict of interest, just to point that out. And then you appointed your employee to the redevelopment agency, just want to point that out to everybody. Does anybody know what the redevelopment agency is?
David, address the chairman.
Okay, I'll address you.
Thank you.
Well, it's a bunch of bureaucrats and pretty much, they, and it stops at you, you guys have the right to create the redevelopment agency. And they can take your land, they can pretty much do whatever they want, you know, it's a disguise, and it's unconstitutional, period. And you guys know it is, and I'm reading up about the redevelopment agency and I have, and I disagree with it. What, what happens when we don't make the payments? Three million a year for how many years? We're going to make fourteen million, we're going to make a fourteen million dollar payment, you know, to, to keep the redevelopment agency? Why can't we just use it for the community? In the long run, who wins?
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
I'll, I'll move that we adopt resolution number eighteen dash eleven.
I'll second that motion.
It's four nothing. Thank you. I'm going to turn the meeting back over to Mayor Perez this time.
Thank you. Do we have a motion in a second for the adoption of the city council financing power authority minutes?
So moved this.
Second.
So moved this stated.
Let's vote. It's approved. Any items on the council consent calendar you'd like to pull for discussion, or do we have a motion in a second for the adoption of the consent calendar?
I'm moving that we adopt the consent calendar as currently comprised.
Second.
It's unanimous.
Oh, you know what, I'm sorry, there was two cards in consent calendars that were given to you.
All right, let's unwind that vote, we'll do it again. Michael Reeves.
Mayor Perez, council staff. In a previous consent calendar, I thought the, the mayor directed city staff to inform him when we were going to use outside contractors for a contractor in Lancaster. C C three, C C eight, and C C nine are all contracted out to outside contractors. In the first one, C C three is contracted to someone in Santa Clarita. C C eight is contracted to a firm in Fresno, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. C C nine is contracted to C A Rasmussen at Valencia, California for three-point-six million dollars. And I thought that we were going to be more diligent and attempt to get local contractors. However, C C ten, Penfield and Smith is a Lancaster firm, thank God, two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars to a Lancaster firm. The only thing wrong though with the C C ten, Penfield and Smith contract is, we come again with this thing that I spoke about last time about binding arbitration if disputes are not resolved by the mediator. And again, I say that really disturbs me that we're getting into binding arbitration in the city contracts. I would prefer we go into a lawsuit rather than go into binding arbitration. I'm not an attorney, I don't know if this is the norm, to have arbitrator arbitrate government contracts and come up with a resolution. It seems like whenever you read about it in the paper, the city governments or county or state get the bad end of it. So in the future, I would hope that these type of binding arbitration clauses would be admitted from city contracts. However, I am elated that one firm is being awarded a contract and they're located in Lancaster. Thank you.
Mr. Bozigan, could you explain the difference between professional services and other contracts?
Certainly. Professional services, there is more latitude in the selection of the firm based on the criteria, the quality of their work, things of that nature, it's not just the low bidder. I would ask David McEwen to explain the California contracting code in terms of low bid, lowest responsive bidder.
Yeah, the public contracts code does require that you accept the bid from the lowest responsible bidder unless there's some defect in the bid, in which case you could reject it. But in this case, there, there are no defects, and it'd be my recommendation you accept the lowest responsible bidder.
So to answer your question, we're, our hands are kind of tied.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Gerhata.
I love the consent calendar, okay, I'm going to speak about the check registry. We're paying twenty-five-hundred dollars for the, for the advertising to the AV Press for the Raw Inspirations Company, the outside vendor that's doing the farmer's market, taking more money from our community. I mean, the farmer's market is a great idea, I like it, but we should have done it here and only here. We spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in advertising to the AV Press, okay, so my opposing views don't get, ever get printed, they just print things that I'm accused of were, you know, things of that nature. We have over a hundred idle properties, a hundred and forty idle properties that the, that we bought through city funds, that are just sitting idle, they weren't, they weren't upside down until the money we put into them made them upside down, now they're just idle. And some of these houses, I understand, were probably built before the eighties or the seventies, and I'm familiar with asbestos removal, asbestos abatement. And I know a lot of these were extensively remodeled, were they asbestos abated? That's a bad asset that we bought. Instead of just leaving the markets to liquidate it, the real estate markets, let them deal with it. We're buying up all these bad assets, and then you guys spend money on just ridiculous things like lemon leaf, ten thousand dollars, you know? If you guys want to eat lemon leaf, or anybody in the public or the community, buy it, I'll buy it. And was I invited, were we feeding the homeless ten thousand dollars worth of lemon leaf? There's so many things that you guys are spending your money on, it's, and it's, it's just ridiculous, we could be spending it on the community, period. And I hate having to come up here and point these things out. So, um, what else am I going to speak on? Because I know there's so much that you guys spend money on, it's, and I add up all these numbers, millions of dollars in the attorney's fees for these lawsuits that we're paying for. And just because the Vagos didn't win theirs doesn't mean the Mongols aren't going to win theirs, and that's going to cost the community how much more money? And then you guys are harassing people daily, how much is that going to cost? And everybody read the check registries and go through the years of history of them, and you'll know.
Thank you. Is there a motion? I think we have to redo it because we have to hear the.
Do we not? Yeah, I believe so. So I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Mr. Ludiki, you want to tell us about the new business item one?
It's Mr. Bozigan.
Oh, I'm sorry. It does, I changed at the last minute, sorry. I just said cold feet, Brian, what is this? You need, you need Toastmasters, I mean?
And proud of it, I might add. We're going to, I'm going to just make a couple of quick remarks and we're going to turn it over to Brian and Robert. Want to bring out a couple of numbers on downtown and the boulevards, so you understand why it's so important to have a first-class parking management strategy. One, there's been nineteen-hundred jobs created on the boulevard, eight-hundred of those are permanent jobs, eleven-hundred construction jobs, I dare say that's the most construction jobs of any project planned or, over the last couple of years. Thirty-seven new businesses have opened on the boulevard, or downtown, in the last three years, and eight-hundred-and-seven housing units. There's been, between public and private, there's a hundred and forty-eight million dollars that's been invested in this community, in the city of Lancaster. It is important to do parking right, and we really thank the council for showing the leadership to say, take a step back and let's really look at this issue. And it's been a tremendous opportunity to engage the downtown and the entire city. We think it's critical that we take the next step so we can be an elite downtown in California to truly do parking right. We have, we're blessed with a lot of parking, but we need to manage it, and parking structures are going to be critical to the continued development of downtown. So with that overview, I'd like to introduce Brian Ludiki.
Thank you, Mark, Mayor Perez and members of the council. I think Mark's point is very important. Managing parking in a downtown area is different than managing parking in privately-held shopping centers and, and similar types of projects. And we've taken the time to, to kind of highlight for you through this presentation, things that we think are important and reasons why we should pursue a parking management strategy within our downtown. within our downtown. First, some background. Based on a 2006 study that we had done as part of the specific plan, there are approximately 3,000 parking spaces in what we define as our downtown area. That's essentially the area between 10th Street West and Sierra Highway, one block either side of Lancaster Boulevard. In 2006, the study showed that the maximum utilization of that parking, in other words, the maximum amount of spaces that were ever occupied at one point in time was 38%. So I can say very, very confidently that if you look at downtown overall, it has a surplus of parking. It did then, it continues to. However, just because the overall area has a surplus of parking does not mean that it is distributed in a way that's always effectively utilized. And what we did was, in listening to people in our community, we took a closer look at what we call our core area. And that core area is a six-block stretch of downtown. Essentially, it is between Fern and Date, one block either side of Lancaster Boulevard. It is the area that has seen the greatest amount of change since 2006. So we felt that it was an appropriate area to take a closer look at in terms of current available parking and parking demand. As I've said, this area has really seen significant change. That has included the construction of new projects, the museum art gallery that's currently under construction, the development of the kiosk buildings and the plaza around Bex, new housing both north and south of the boulevard, and of course, the recently completed cinema. We have also seen reuse of existing buildings. Some of that is currently ongoing with facade improvements, but we have uses coming in that are far more intense than we had in place in 2006. And those have included both the revitalization of the former McMahon's Building, or I should say, the Furniture Warehouse Building into Bex, the addition of the lemon leaf, which people may not remember, did not exist in 2006 when we did that study, new uses that are going in on the north side of the boulevard, including the Kinetic Beer Works and the Port Avino Wine Bar, as well as other uses that have been established. And of course, we've made changes to the street parking, both on the boulevard and on FIG. In comparing what has happened in that core area since 2006, we find that the boulevard, which had 39 parking spaces in that three-block stretch in 2006, now has 65, an increase of 26. On-street parking, which includes the streets that are not the boulevard, have had, made a minor change from 158 on-street spaces to 159. And there has been a slight decrease in off-street parking available as a result of new construction. But overall, there has been a slight increase in the total amount of parking within that core area. And I think it's important to note that this count that was taken in 2006 did not include any of the on-street parking on either Kettering or Milling, and it did, does not include parking in areas that would not be normally considered parking. And the good example of that would be the former Woolworth Building site, which although it's parked on, we did not count within this parking calculation. We also took a look at what would be the current parking demand based on the uses that are existing and also under construction in that core area. And this was calculated based on an assumption that all of them were in use at the same time, that you had a full cinema, that you had a full LPAC, that you had a full Bex, that you had the museum art gallery occupied. And in that core area, you would have a demand for about 1,051 parking spaces. Given the total amount available within that core, you would still have a surplus even if that were to occur. However, the comment that there is no parking is a common thing, not only within our downtown, but in downtowns throughout California, and in fact, as we found in the United States. The reason that this comes up is because the perception of whether there's parking is based on a number of factors. Number one, location. Where is the parking located in relation to where you want to go? How visible is it? How aware are you of it being in that location and available to you? How safe do you feel using it? We found that even in areas you might consider upper income or upper scale, there are sometimes fears in using parking spaces. And it's very important to note that perception will always trump reality. I heard this again in a seminar today, that if people don't believe there's enough parking, you have a parking issue that you must address. I use this as an example because I think it points out the kind of things that we deal with in terms of looking at perception. This is not downtown, but it happens to be the Lowe's Center where Chili's is located and so forth. We get comments from our citizens that there is not enough parking there, even though, if you look, there is parking that is clearly available to use. But it points up this issue of perception. For whatever reason, the way that it's designed or the way it's located, people get the impression that there's not enough parking, even though physically there clearly is. As I said, downtown parking complaints are very common, but they are rarely caused by a physical lack of parking. However, how parking is managed is very critical to how that perception plays out within a community. And I think it can be safely said that successful downtowns, and we're going to give you several examples, manage their parking. One example that I think, we didn't go in depth into this, but some of you may be familiar with the community of Walnut Creek. It's in the East Bay. It's a pretty upscale community, and they have a very successful downtown. They have managed their downtown pretty effectively since the 1950s. But to show you how this perception of parking plays into what a community can do and what it goes through when decisions are made, I bring to you an example in 2009. There was a user that wanted to come into the downtown area of Walnut Creek, and they proposed to build a new building and build 175 parking spaces, and the city council thought that was a great idea, and they approved the development agreement to do that. It ultimately created such a furor in the community, because the perception is there's not enough parking, that it was forced by the council onto a referendum. The council actually put it on the ballot for a vote to whether or not this user could come in. It did pass by a 70 to 30% margin. When I tell you the user, you may be amazed, but it was Neiman Marcus Department Store. They wanted to come into the downtown of Walnut Creek, and the debate was whether or not there was enough parking to accommodate them. Within Walnut Creek's downtown, there are about 7,000 parking spaces available, and many of them go unused. The mayor of Walnut Creek, almost exasperated, does not know how to convince people that there is parking available. Oh, to have those problems. Yeah, well, it depends on where you are as to what the problem is, I guess. We took a look at three cities, and I'm not suggesting in any of these that any of these are the management strategies we should follow as a city, but I use them as examples for how cities have managed their downtown areas through parking strategies. Some of you may be familiar with downtown Ventura. In some ways, it's got similarities to what we have. It's got one main street where a lot of the activity is focused, in this case, right here. Their city hall is in the downtown area. They have some major cinemas downtown that act as draws. And they have about 3,500 parking spaces within their downtown. They had a parking management analysis done, and they found that on Friday night, which was their maximum occupancy, that they had about 55% of their spaces occupied, a little more than half. They have a goal of creating what's known as a Park One Once environment in their downtown, an area where people will park and then walk to the various users. And they've adopted several management strategies to try to achieve this. They have taken the step of metering their on-street parking. The goal of that is to prevent long-term parking on their streets and keep that available for shorter-term users. They have also built structured and surface parking lots, some of those highlighted, and they have allowed people to park in those at a far lesser rate, in fact, in some cases free for a certain amount of time. And they have a situation where they have a lot of privately-held parking lots, small ones that are scattered throughout their downtown. And they have tried, to the extent that they can, to encourage those private owners to allow their parking to be shared. They have not been as successful at that as they would like. It is creating, at times, a bit of an issue for them because they would obviously not like to duplicate parking, especially given the rate of occupancy that they currently have. We also took a look at a city that you might not have thought has some similarities, but we looked at Grand Junction, Colorado, a city of approximately 70,000 people in western Colorado. They also have a pretty long history in terms of managing their downtown. And they have a combination of on-street, surface, and garage parking within their downtown area. They manage theirs through a similar combination of things. They meter their side-street parking, in this case, the streets that are north and south and east and west, with the exception of their main street. They charge a fee to park in their garage, and they allow, as far as we can tell, free parking in their surface parking lots. They do not charge for any parking on their main street, but their main street is actually designed in such a way that there is a limit on the amount of parking. It's kind of an undulating street with alternating bays of parking. For any of you who might be familiar with the Montrose neighborhood on the north side of Glendale, that street on Honolulu Avenue is modeled after Grand Junction's. But once again, they have adopted this series of strategies to address what they think are their issues in their downtown. And we took a look at San Luis Obispo. Of the three places that we studied, this particular city has what I would call the highest-developed downtown and development and parking strategies. And what I mean by that is that they have organized their parking strategies to complement their development strategies for their downtown. In other words, they want what they do in parking to promote the kind of development that they want to occur. They have really taken a position that they want to eliminate small parking lots in their They would prefer and are actually actively pursuing the development of parking structures on the periphery of their core area. They want to create a city center that is dense and walkable. And they have adopted several management strategies to encourage this. The first thing that they did is they cut the parking requirement within their downtown to half of what the normal is in their city. In other words, if you were to develop, for instance, a restaurant in the outlying area of San Luis Obispo, and it requires you 20 parking spaces under the code, if you do it in the downtown area, they only require you 10. And they would actually prefer, although they don't demand this, they would prefer that you not provide that parking on your lot. They offer an option for what's known as INLU parking costs. For new development, at the current time, a little over $17,000 a parking space. For a new use that creates a greater demand going in an existing building, about $4,400. And the reason they do this is they would prefer, for example, if you had a 10,000-square-foot lot, and you were planning to build a 5,000-square-foot building on it and place the parking on the balance, they'd really prefer that you didn't put the parking and instead build a 10,000-square-foot building. They see that as not only promoting their goal of additional business development in their downtown, as I'll go over in a few minutes, they see that as very important to the long-term financial future of their city. And they have metered all of their on-street parking, much in the same way that other places we studied, they, at the present time, charge a flat rate of $1.25 an hour. The city council of San Luis Obispo actually recently voted to increase that, beginning in November, to $1.50. And they do charge to park in their structures, but they charge a much reduced rate, and my understanding is the first hour and a half or so is free, but they charge 75 cents an hour, once again, trying to encourage longer-term parking in the peripheral area and leaving the street spaces available for shorter-term stays. They have also taken quite a bit of effort in terms of how they fund their parking structures. They expect that 40% of the cost of them is going to be borne by the private sector. That comes essentially from those INLU parking fees that we talked about earlier. They expect that 60% of the cost of those parking structures is going to be done out of public money. And a part of that is what they believe that they are going to get from development using all of their property rather than only using a part of it. They believe that the increased tax revenue, the increased property tax revenue, is going to flow into their city as a result of encouraging people to make more efficient and greater use of their land. Their latest structure, 445 spaces that they have approved, will cost them approximately $20 million. To summarize, successful downtown parking must have a long-term parking management strategy. It is absolutely essential because the parking resource that exists has to be used efficiently. It is expensive to build parking, whether it's a parking structure or a parking surface lot, and it's important that anything that is out there on-street, on-city land, or on-private land, is used the most efficiently that it can be. It has to integrate with development goals. In other words, if your city is really attempting to create a pedestrian, walkable area, you want to make sure that the approaches you take to parking do not destroy that. The classic example of that is Buffalo, New York. There was so much concern that there wasn't enough parking that they ultimately started bulldozing buildings in their downtown to get enough parking. Soon, they had no parking problem because there was no place left to go downtown, except the parking lots. So it's important that whatever we do as a city integrates with the long-term development goals for downtown. And it must address revenues and costs because even the maintenance of parking is an ongoing expense that has to be dealt with. I'd like to introduce Robert Neal, is going to go over briefly for you some specific things on parking structures, and then I will summarize.
Thank you, Brian. Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff has conducted a preliminary study on what a parking structure might look like and cost. We found San Luis Obispo a good source of information. In the style of a San Luis Obispo parking structure, this is what a parking structure might look like. The idea is that a parking structure doesn't have to look like a parking structure. What we, our conceptual study was based on was a four-story mixed-use parking and retail structure that would have a total of 620 parking spaces. It would set on two acres of land and be roughly 345,000 square feet. The first floor would contain nearly 50,000 square feet of retail space, and on the fourth level, we envision a 2,000-square-foot event center that would have a spectacular view of the downtown and the Antelope Valley. This shows our estimate for a parking structure, $23 million. It does not include land costs or street improvement costs. We went back to check our numbers, and we found our numbers to be very comparable to what other California cities have paid or budgeted for parking structures. This is an estimate of an annual operating cost for a parking structure. Sometimes, operating costs are overlooked, and we wanted to get a handle on them. We obtained this information from San Luis Obispo. As you see, it's nearly $500,000 a year. On this slide, we have put together what we believe to be a conservative estimate of potential revenue from a mixed-use retail parking structure. Our estimate is based on a dollar per square foot retail lease, and also assumes some parking is reserved. The thought behind the reserved parking is that if we were to enter into an agreement with a business for the use of their parking lot, that we would return for their use a like amount of parking. The revenue numbers show that there's sufficient monies to cover our operating costs, but may... not have sufficient monies to pay off a bond indebtedness associated with the construction of the facility. Other sources of money would be needed, such as grants or parking meter revenues. This slide concludes my presentation. Brian will come back and give you a summary of staff's recommendations.
I'd just like to add, from the planning standpoint, the specific plan for downtown did envision that there would be a need for parking structures downtown Lancaster. And I think it's important because that becomes the way in which you free up land for development that further enhances the downtown effort and the viability of downtown. I have to give credit to Mark for this, but he's pointed out, I think appropriately, we had a 33 spaces where we built, where the cinema was built. But if you look at the effect on downtown, is the cinema more important, or were those 33 parking spaces more important? And I think from the planning standpoint, at least, I would say that the ability to use that land for that cinema is far more important to the vitality and long-term future of the Boulevard than retaining that as parking would have been. We do believe that a parking management strategy is important. We think that this is the proper time to do it, just as downtown is, I think, beginning to really show its signs of life and progress forward. We are recommending to you that you appropriate $75,000 from traffic impact fees to pay for this study. We do have an estimate, and the amount that we have asked for you would cover that type of parking management strategy. Robert and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Why do we need to have a study? I mean, it seems to me like you guys have done a pretty thorough job.
Well, I appreciate the compliment, but there are a lot of nuances in downtown parking that people who are more familiar with these situations, I think, could help us with. And in particular, helping us to go through what appropriate management strategies might be and looking at how we address this in the long term. I think that the important thing for the parking management approach is making sure that we do not cut off the ability for future development, nor do we continue to have this perception that there's not enough parking for some reason or another. And included in parking management strategy is long-term growth, parking demand, parking demand at various times of the day, and also, I think, very importantly, wayfinding approaches to make sure that people who come into our downtown area, particularly if they're not familiar with it, know where to go, know where the parking's available, and feel that it's an easy, effective way to park and enjoy the downtown area that we have created.
Thank you. Michael Reeves?
Mayor Paris, Council, Staff. It wasn't that long ago that I submitted to the Council my own survey of the Boulevard and the islands that are in the middle of the Boulevard, which I determined that we could double the parking in the middle of the Boulevard if we removed some of the obstacles. And that survey did not cost the City of Lancaster anything. I did it free. It took me a day to do it. I think before we spend $75,000 to think about a parking strategy, and by the way, Staff, it was a beautiful presentation. I always have utmost respect for you and your presentations. I think that we ought to concentrate on getting a few more commercial ventures downtown, see if we can use that kind of money to get some chain stores down so we have a place to go. If you go down on the weekend, the place is deserted. There's plenty of parking. The complaint is not, there's not enough parking. I'm sorry. The complaint is that people want to park right across from the store that they go in. They want to be conveniently located. They don't want to walk. Well, I'm sorry, this isn't the mall. You know, the mall, you can park right outside and maybe go into Penny's or Macy's, but you're going to have to walk a little bit. And I thought, though, that the multipurpose thing was good, but before we do something like that, we need to get more businesses down here. And another thing, the congestion on the Boulevard, that's what turns off a lot of people, too. When they get on the Boulevard during a weekday, it's like crazy time over there. People don't know whether to turn left or right. And should we get that straightened out? Overall, though, we have this thing with the redevelopment agency. If we ever come out on top of that, then we could probably have a grand strategy for downtown once more, using redevelopment money. But until that time, I would, if we have to spend $75,000, I would use that to try to recruit a couple of chain stores down here for people to have a place to shop and buy clothes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the appropriations of $75,000 for the traffic impact fees balance to the capital improvement budget for the account listed in a minute.
I'll second that motion.
Is it unanimous? Okay, moving on to Council Agenda Item 1. We have numerous speaker cards. Elizabeth Helm?
I was hoping to speak after you'd made your decision.
Sorry. You don't want to speak?
I had my speech last time about the importance of diversity.
Well, the purpose of public comment is to persuade or to let us know what you think before we vote, not afterwards.
A couple of weeks ago, I was speaking, and I talked about how diverse I see this community as being and how I don't really see that reflected in the faces of those that govern us. And one of the comments that you and I engaged in a little bit afterwards was that diversity is not necessarily about solely about how we look. I believe that Councilmember Crist asked me if an Asian female was diverse enough. And my response was that what we look like is not about the sole factor of diversity, it's about how we think. And I would strongly encourage you to appoint someone who doesn't work for you and doesn't attend your specific church. I think it's important to get viewpoints from what you might see as outsiders, but I see as part of us. Thank you.
Thank you. I always appreciate it when people put thoughts in my head. I don't think you know what I think, okay? David Paul?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Good evening. I was thinking back the other day to the 2008 mayoral election, and Mayor, while I was out one day, one of your power brokers, the young men that you had working for your campaign, called my house to ask my wife to vote for you. And she said to them, "Well, shouldn't you check to see who you're calling before you call?" I'm the wife of one of the other candidates. And there was a pause.
Wait a minute, David, does that mean she wouldn't vote for me?
There was a pause, and he came back and said, "So Rex can count on your support." I like that. That was cute. You know, I don't know if running an unsuccessful campaign for public office qualifies you as a politician, but I think that what Americans have against politicians is that they never get out of the campaign mode. And there comes a time to campaign, and there comes a time to govern, and we all have to help the city move forward together. So it seems logical to me, Mr. Mayor, that someone that supports the city and what you're doing to push it forward is the candidate we would seek. Appointments are for the people who hold the power, the mayor, the governor, the president, and that's your discretion. And I appreciate the candidates that you have nominated. They all have exhibited exemplary service for our city. So that's what I'm looking for in the appointment, is someone that will support what you're trying to do to move our city forward. And I appreciate it myself. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Michael Reeves?
Mayor Paris, Council, Staff. I hope the Council indulged me and let me go over maybe a minute or two of my speech. In return, I will not speak.
You'll see how good it is, Dave.
Let us look at Lancaster today, September 27, 2011. We have approximately 20% unemployment. We have vacant houses on almost every block in the city. We have homeless people living under freeway overpasses. We have storefronts vacant in our downtown and throughout the shopping areas of the city. We have home alarm systems on every block. We have major streets that are in disrepair. We have a sheriff's department having to deal with Part 1 crimes and unable to respond to minor crimes that could escalate into major crimes. We are expecting an influx of criminals and parolees into our community because of the policies of the State of California. We are forced to pay ransom to keep a redevelopment agency that has served us well in the past. We have a citizen population that is skeptical of its political leadership. On the positive side, we have awesome city staff and administration who have done innovative things to keep this city running on a day-to-day basis, while responding to the challenges of other government units and the special interest groups who clamor for their special interests but who do not contribute to this city as a whole. We have a council that is well-versed in the structure by having served in positions of responsibility. So what do we do now? It's time that we find the horizon. Currently, I'm reading an autobiography of General Richard Myers, USAF retired, former Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staffs under Presidents Clinton and George W. Bush. General Myers writes, "When he was a student pilot, the instructors instructed him, 'Keep your eyes on the horizon. If the horizon stays flat, your wings are level.'" Today, as we look at the horizon, we see it is not flat. Our country and its allies are engaged in numerous armed conflicts. These same countries are faced with economic calamity because of a dysfunctional financial system based on 'more is better.' More wars, more public welfare, more indifference to proven virtues such as hard work and personal responsibility, and more excesses in government spending with a reduced tax base is not better. The bankruptcy of governments and the near collapse of our financial system is proof that more is not better. I have submitted to each of you a packet of my qualifications and my goals if I were nominated and selected for the council-matic vacancy. It outlined my desire to improve our disaster system. Current events in Washington bear out the importance of our providing for ourselves when an earthquake, a fire, or man-made disaster occurs. We cannot rely entirely on the state in a multiple-place disaster. We need to provide practice, involve, and perfect it to its second nature, not only for our government, but for our citizens. Because of the current apathy and loathing of public officials, we need to emphasize response to citizens' concerns. Why? We need to invigorate the confidence of our citizens. I know we have scheduled surveys, et cetera, that dictate the priorities of our government, but right now, our priority should be citizens' concerns and complaints.
Mr. Reeves, you're pushing the minute.
Okay. Can I finish, Mr. Mayor?
Are you almost done?
I'm almost done. I'm almost done. Finally, I address the Council, and I call upon you as a fellow citizen. Councilman Mann, Councilman Smith, Mayor Paris, Councilman Crist. Please allow me to participate in the government of this city. Allow me to help us find that level horizon so that the wings of our city will be level. On the walls inside the AVTA building are the words, and I paraphrase. People will not remember what she said. People won't remember what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel. I want the citizens of this community to feel that they are special, because they are, all of them. And I want the citizens to feel that their government does care. Thank you.
Thank you. David Abber?
Good evening, Council, Staff, and Citizens. I have a card on MB1. I don't know what happened to that. Okay, some names come to mind. Michael Reeves, Jonathan Irvin, Ed Cilio, Andy Wasaki, Henry Hearn, Jim Jeffra. Some of those names have had experience already sitting on the Council and would be good choices. But also something all those names represent are their males. There wasn't one male candidate considered, which is discriminatory, as was the statement about the convicted felons. Also discriminatory, but the mayor was quick to add at the end of the meeting, which I commend him on, that he realized he was discriminating and said that I had every right to file a lawsuit. With respect to that discrimination, which he acknowledged, he was discriminating against convicted felons and that that's, he had no problem with acting and denying the civil liberties guaranteed by the Constitution. Apparently, he thinks that that's how he can run this town and get away with it, but that's not going to be the case. So having mentioned those people's names, I'm curious why Mr. Arnie Rodeo would make a excellent council member, has diverse ideas. Mr. Irvin, Mr. Reeves, who's here and shows an interest in the city, attends the meetings, has put his hat in. I mean, I know you couldn't pick Victoria Zavala because I guess she doesn't live here, so she couldn't have been one of your selections from the female side. But, you know, I think we deserve some answers of why you continue to discriminate, since you seem to be the one putting forth these people that you feel. Jim Jeffra, I'm sure, could have given us seven more months. He was an excellent councilman when he was here. So is, you know, Ed Cilio, who just left, who's up to speed on what's going on here. But he chose not to go in that direction, which raises a lot of questions in my mind why, you know, you have divisive ways of who you want to put in here. And I guess you leveled it down to three people. I guess some of the other choices weren't acceptable, whatever, but I think that there's three other members of this council, and I think we should hear who some of their choices may have been male choices so that we don't demonstrate discrimination, which is exactly what's going on. Not one male person was considered for the job. That's discrimination. And denying me the opportunity or any other person eligible to run, no matter what you think of what happened in the past, you know, just because you weren't arrested for any of the felonies you committed doesn't mean you didn't commit them.
Thank you. David Grajeda?
I want to say, Michael Reeves, you are a real gentleman, and I appreciate everything you do when you come up here and speak. And I would like to see more people come up and speak and maybe apply for the job. I never threw my bid in there. I don't even want to step near that. But I hope somebody that goes in that place, in that chair, will have more dialogue than Kitty Seto. She probably, she probably said more than 10 words since she sat there, and all she does is sit. There's no discussion. She's never involved.
Mr. Grajeda?
Yes?
This is not the opportunity to jump on Ms. Zato. This is your opportunity to talk about the appointment to the City Council, and you will limit it to that, all right? Thank you.
Well, I disagree on how she was appointed, and I disagree.
Then you should save that for another time, all right?
I'm allowed to talk past and present. I'm allowed to talk past and present.
You are allowed to talk about the issue before us now. If you want to bring it up at another time, you can.
According to the Brown Act, if you want to read it, you can.
If I need to adjourn this meeting because you are not staying on point and are disruptive, I will do so. Is that what you need me to do?
I understand. I won't ruin it because you don't like me.
Well, that's true. I don't like you, but you certainly have a right to speak.
Okay. Then let me speak. Now, I feel that, you know, if somebody that's already got... Never mind. Oh, man, you just messed up my train of thought. Thank you very much. Michael Reeves is a great candidate. Okay? He came up here and he spoke on what he believes in. He's even done things for the community. He's gone out and spent his time on the Boulevard trying to conduct a parking lot survey, okay? He's more than qualified. He comes up and speaks on every agenda item like myself. He is more credible than I am, but you seem to like my attention more, and you seem to address me more. So, you know, I would like to see some consideration towards somebody that does have qualifications. And I'm sure you're well aware of his qualifications. I wish everybody else was. So, you know, I just know that you want to put somebody there that favors your vote, you know? I'm just saying. I hope they have dialogue. I hope they are part of the community and they ask the right questions, or maybe even vote no, or have a discussion. We don't even have discussions anymore. You guys just vote, you know? You already had her name... Her name placard filled out before she was even appointed. Thank you. I yield my time.
Good move. Okay, that ends the speakers' cards and the public comment. It is true that I've limited it to three people. I've asked for public comment on those three individuals. I didn't receive any tonight, but I can assure you, for the past two weeks, I've been receiving considerable public comment as to which of the three ladies I should appoint. All of them. Sandra Smith, Sandra Johnson, and Cassandra Harvey are extremely qualified, and I would be proud to sit with any one of them. Two of them do not seem to have the time requirements at the present time to sit and have indicated they would like to reconsider sitting on the council at some other time, but right now, due to job commitments, they're unable to devote the amount of energy that is required to be a city councilperson. That being the case, I am nominating Cassandra Harvey to the redevelopment agency, and I'm nominating Sandra Johnson to the city council seat. Any discussion?
I'm confused. Redevelopment agency?
Yes.
She would sit as an extra?
She would sit as a member of the redevelopment agency but not on the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The appointment to the redevelopment agency is not on the agenda. It's just the appointment to the city council.
Well, I kind of... I kind of was considering that, but if I... The plan was, I mean, if I'd appointed just to the city council, she would have assumed the seat of the redevelopment agency, so to a certain extent, it is.
And she can always, always resign that position before the next meeting.
Then let's do this. Let's leave Cassandra Harvey till the next meeting for appointment to the redevelopment agency and proceed with Sandra Johnson to the appointment of the city council seat.
That's the way.
And that obviously means that Sandra Johnson would not sit on the redevelopment agency.
Okay.
So that's the nomination. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we appoint Sandra Johnson to the city council.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I do. I want to address some of the concerns. I did receive your booklet, Michael, in regards to taking consideration. I received Gary Burgess's. I received information from Andy Visaki and other people. I just think that Sandra Johnson is a perfect match for this city council and what she'll add to it at this time. So we did look at your stuff, at least I did, and I think that, you know, a lot of people are qualified. She's just a perfect fit for this at this time. That's all.
I think Sandra Johnson has a proven track record of being a successful businesswoman and, you know, when it comes to economic growth and creating jobs, and that's what we need here in the city, too. So I think it's a good fit.
I just want to maybe all bring up the back end here. I think the three candidates, it would have been difficult for me to find three better candidates. In fact, I can remember when I ran in 2008 or decided to run, I actually asked Sandra Smith to run with me. So... And I thought she was qualified then. Still think she's qualified, so.
So do I. Thank you. Okay, let's vote. We have a new council member, Sandra Johnson. We'll swear her in at the next meeting. And we'll deal with the redevelopment agency at that time also. I do want to make a comment. Kitty, you know, it's very easy for people to attack you as a way of attacking me. You know, you're somewhat of the person they like to throw the darts at as a way of getting at me. The reason Kitty was appointed to this is she has gone to China twice. She has extensive relationships with the various Chinese businesses that we're hoping to track to Lancaster. That is a redevelopment function. The fact that she works with me was something I considered and knew that we would be taking shots from it, but at the same time, the value of putting her on the redevelopment agency, giving those contacts and that experience with the Chinese companies overrode that. And I'm assuming that's why my council members voted to put her in that position. It's not going to change. You can come up here and point your finger at her and throw darts at her till you're blue in the face. She will remain on the redevelopment agency. Yes, she does work for me. Does that mean that she does what I tell her? You have no idea how my office runs if you think that's what my lawyers do. We spend an incredible amount of time finding incredibly bright people that nobody tells what to do, and she is one of them. I am proud she works for my office, and I am exceptionally proud that she chose to take the seat on the redevelopment agency. Thank you. Hopefully, that will be the end of it at these meetings, but I doubt it. Kitty, you're going to have to just sit there and smile at them. Okay. No action on the financing authority, no action on the housing authority, no action on the Lancaster Power Authority. City manager?
Yes, two things. One thing struck me, one of the speakers. We appreciate, and a couple folks, compliments of staff, but this only works when staff and council are on the same page, and we've seen what happens in the city when that doesn't work. So we are one. There's no distinction between the role of the council and the role of the staff. We sink or swim together, and we appreciate the leadership that the council shows in that regard. Secondly, I'd like to invite the public. We have two events coming up for the next council meeting. The first is Bark at the Park Saturday at Lancaster City Park. It's always a great time. Bring your dog out. Bring your well-behaved dogs out. The bad-behaved dogs can stay home. And then the 7th, 8th, and 9th is the Streets of Lancaster. We had 35,000 people last year. Pray for good weather, and we should break that this year. We have great promoter, great events, very organized, and some incredible racing documented, fastest track in the country. You'll see cars go 100 miles an hour down Lancaster Boulevard, go-karts. So we look forward to seeing everyone out there.
Thank you. And this is the year the vice mayor goes down. Isn't that right, Mark?
Amen to that.
Do I get the pole position for winning two years in a row?
Yeah, you can have the pole position.
But have you paid somebody to take me out now? Is that...
Me? You? It will be a concerted effort. Let's put it that way.
I still remember the potato race.
Ooh, ooh. Poor sports, what can I say? City clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on any items that are not on the agenda. You will find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We respectfully request that you fill the cards out completely and concisely so that, if necessary, the council, city manager, or staff can get in touch with you. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when your name is called. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you choose to ask a question during this time, any response by council will not extend your three minutes. When you approach the podium, you will see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins. The yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light comes on when your time is up. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting, and we appreciate it if you would give considerate time to that to allow other people to have their three minutes as well. State law does prohibit the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Maggie Campbell?
Good evening, Mayor and city council members.
You sure you want that job now that you're...
I'm very encouraged, actually. I'm here today to say hello to everybody visiting with you from your neighboring city, Palmdale, where I'm actually running for mayor in the city of Palmdale. I'm very encouraged by what I see here tonight, and I'm very impressed by all of the hard work you've been doing over the years. I purchased my first home in Palmdale about four years ago, but I've been working in the Antelope Valley for 10 years, so I've seen the progression over the years, and I'm very encouraged by it. And just wanted to come by and say hello and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. David Paul?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. That race is going to be spectacular, isn't it? I had quite a bit of fun today, and I thank you. You know, one of my favorite lines from a movie is Nigel Powers, Austin Powers' father from Goldmember, and he says, "There's two things in life I can't stand: people who are intolerant of other people's cultures and the Dutch." And I think that that's about where diversity lies. You know, we all have a point where we're comfortable up to. I started to examine Scott Page and some of his works, and, you know, it just strikes me how much diversity is the truth, how important diversity is. I like to think in my mind the quote about truth. "Truth is correct and comprehensive knowledge, and if this knowledge is comprehensive, it must embrace the proper relation between all souls and things and forces and entities. Thus, this truth is a freeing and a transmuting power, a feeling as well as an intellectual perception." We have a long way to go on diversity, but we're getting there, and I appreciate the city's commitment to furthering our understanding of each other. But really, my way of thinking about diversity is quite simple. You know, when you get to know somebody, you learn how much you're actually alike each other, and that's what breaks down the boundaries. All our Unite programs this weekend were fantastic to bring people together. All we need to do is want to get to know each other and want to be warm to each other, and that stuff comes off. So again, what I would say is, please, let's all just work together. All the people that have good ideas about how to move this city forward, if you present them in a way that is a little kinder, you'll be listened to, because it's futile to get up and bark and harp and chirp. It does no good. I appreciate the effort. I'd like to see us all get along. So again, thank you for everything we're doing as a city, and I'm looking forward to the race. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Pizano?
I feel like my presence here is long overdue. My name is Maria Pizano. I was born in Lancaster and have lived around the Antelope Valley my whole life. I have seen many changes that have had a negative impact on this area over the past 15 to 20 years, but none so devastating as those we've been forced to endure over the past five years. We've been led to believe that everything is going wonderful. Homes and businesses are being built. There's more jobs. Our education system is doing well, and the biggest, sorry, lie of them all is that crime rate has dropped. Come to the Boulevard and see that all is well. While the newly remodeled Boulevard does have some nice qualities about it, I feel it has only been used to divert attention away from the real problems that this area is facing, such as businesses being forced to close, no jobs, problems with housing, our schools, crime, and law enforcement. Sure, all of these events on the Boulevard have been labeled as great successes, like the holiday events, but it is only due to the fact that there is nowhere else to go. The schools no longer sponsor or provide an outlet for these events, and most areas are not even safe places for people, especially children, to be. Then we have the farmer's market, which I came... Which is nice. There's no... But there's no agriculture left in this town. This is not a community event. Even new businesses on the Boulevard come and go, as no one can afford a new business. Just look around the rest of the town. Businesses close up every day. Shops and centers are empty. There's no jobs unless you work in some capacity for the city or a large corporation, for law enforcement, or for those fake career schools that offer training for jobs that make no sense. $150 million used to build what we have on the Boulevard. What do we have? Housing apartments for the elderly, many of which lost their homes because they couldn't pay some code violations. Many people in that area have had to give up their homes in this area, homes that the city came in and bought. There are many homes all over the valley that are vacant or that have been used to place people from other areas or from backgrounds who do not care about our way of life. But then there's a great deal of money to be made in real estate, building materials, medical supplies, cleanup crews, education programs, housing, jails, law enforcement, and crime. And speaking of crime, the fact is, crime in this city is worse than it has ever been. I'm really... I'm so tired of hearing how crime is going down so much in this city. The fact is, crime is worse than it has ever been. There are many people, including my own family and friends, who have been victims of crimes such as sexual assault, home invasions, robberies, shootings, and other misconduct. When the police are called, nothing is ever done. The victims are treated like the criminals while the criminals continue committing the crimes. I also believe that it is criminal for those who cover up the real problems, who manipulate others into doing what they want, who make money off the misfortune of others, or for their own greed or recognition. I am disgusted and saddened that this has now become our way of life. It has been stated that no lawsuits will ever be brought against the city, and I think maybe it's time that they should.
Isaac Gahida?
My name is Isaac Gahida, and I'm a drug addict. Due to my drug addiction, I was arrested for two counts of methamphetamine possession. That is why I stand before you, a felon, even though I have been clean for five years and gone through past rehabilitation programs. I owe those people my life. I would like to comment on what you said on record last City Hall meeting. To start, I would like to explain to you my fear. Fear is having a bullheaded brother coming to City Hall upsetting the mayor, City Hall, the captain of police, getting arrested. We countless times tell him to drop it. David, take the deal. Forget about this stuff. My mom is so scared, she won't even drive him here. He... He'll... But on purpose, just so that he wouldn't speak, yet he walks and walks and makes sure that he comes here just in time just to speak. It makes it really hard to sleep at night, you know? But you, Mayor, you're well-known for taking on two biker gangs, street gangs, syndicates of that nature. Why are you terrified of one man who can't even own a gun? You have a hired gun. The police know where I live. I had detectives at my house two weeks ago. You have nothing to fear from us. Anyone can come... Anyone here can come meet me in person, and my family here, and know that we are nice people. But the media's never interviewed my brother, shown his side of the story, or even quoted three lines of when he has ever spoken. My whole... Your whole rant was quoted last meeting. My brother didn't even have one word quoted. Let's set this aside. Forget he's my brother. For you to stereotype me or anyone with a past just because one or two men upset you is complete bigotry. To go as far to say you discriminate us, that you had it... If you had it your way, I wouldn't even live here. If you... If I passed you down the street, would you think you're better than me and that I don't even belong here because I'm a felon, a drug addict? I believe this behavior is not befitting of our mayor, and you need to change your way of thinking and understand that it is wrong. I will not stand to be insulted anymore. Now you have two Gahidas here that are going to continue speaking, because we are no longer scared of you.
Tom Miller?
My name is Tom Miller. I just wanted to comment on the parking, give it a different approach. Kind of impromptu, because I wasn't planning on speaking. I was just coming to listen about the parking, what direction you were going. I know everybody wants front-row parking. Everybody would take the handicap if you could do it. And me, too. And me too. But I'd like to say that I was just in some cities just recently. I was in San Jose, San Luis Obispo, Morro Bay, Santa Barbara, and I think Ventura. And I noticed they have a trolley running around. If your parking structure or whatever isn't right up front where people want to be, because that's where they want to be, and that's what I think mainly the complaint is from people, is they want to be right at the front door. Maybe a different image, a different approach, maybe it's a trolley, a shuttle, whatever. I know I spent a little time at the Henry Mayo Hospital and they had the shuttle running around that. And I, and I think that was kind of an image for the city. It's also a convenience. Maybe you can charge and recoup some of your costs from a parking structure by charging a little bit more and implementing some of the costs of the trolley to get them to the front door, get them up and down the Boulevard. Maybe certain weekends where it's really busy, it's a good image up and down the Boulevard with a name, Downtown Trolley, or whatever you want to call it, Lancaster Trolley, running up and down the street, making it convenient for people to get end to end. And I guess that's pretty much it. Just maybe give it a thought on where this parking structure is in relation to where people want to go. Maybe you might need some transportation needs, especially if you've got a lot of older folks that maybe can't walk two blocks to get to where they're going to go. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mark Pearson.
Good evening, mayor, council members and staff. My name's Mark Pearson, and I'm a 20-year resident at the Antelope Valley. I currently live in Palmdale and have never been convicted of a felony. Now, having said that, I want to first and foremost congratulate Sandra Johnson. I don't know her personally, she doesn't work for me or go to my church, but she has been described as a businessperson interested in economic growth and creating jobs, and that's why I'm here tonight. Before though I start, it's amazing how, and no disrespect to the woman that spoke earlier, how two people can have a completely different perspective. The last 20 years in the, living here in the Antelope Valley, and particularly the last five, I've too seen a lot of changes, and 99% of them for the better. I could go line for line and talk about crime. Mr. Mayor, is, is crime up or down?
Crime is dropping like a stone.
That's what I, that's what I read and have felt and have seen, and I just think the glass can be half-full or half-empty, and from my perspective, it's half-full. Back to growth. The gentleman over here, and very, very intelligent, and I appreciate his comments, talked about 20% unemployment and vacant homes everywhere, and all of these things are true. So, how can we make that better? That, that should be our focus. One of the, one of the issues that I want to talk about is housing and vacant homes and the problem that exists because of them. We all know, in, in every neighborhood, some more than others, that there are vacant properties. And these properties have problems with vandalism, or graffiti, or even squatters, a terrible situation where they're kind of bringing down the lifestyle of that immediate cul-de-sac or neighborhood, and that's where we live with our families. And so, you know, that's a concern to many of us. So, I wanted to have an opportunity in the last two weeks to meet with the city manager, but I guess he wasn't available, and I'm, so I'm sure...
We have a, we have a meeting scheduled.
Oh, we do? I didn't, that's great. I didn't hear about that. So, thank you. Thank you. So, that's great. To talk about how we can encourage job creation through housing, and at the same time, create jobs and take care of these vacant homes, this problem that are in all, in all of our neighborhoods. And that means I have 30 seconds. Great. So, in, in conclusion, the banks are actually holding a lot of these properties that are vacant. So, I've walked away from them because they owed too much, or they had a financial hardship or whatnot. But the banks are not being responsible about these properties. They're kind of saying, well, we don't know they're vacant yet or have possession of them. And they're creating this blithe in the community. And so, the city manager and I are going to get together and talk about how we can fix that problem and maybe create some revenues that can offset what I think is a... Come back? What, okay. What I, what I think is a small problem with, we're over-regulating the housing industry here, and I'm speaking specifically to our housing business license and the cost associated with that. I don't want investors to feel like they shouldn't buy properties in Lancaster, you know, because there's this regulation, this housing regulation that is a little too expensive. So, we, maybe we should talk about offsetting the monies that are brought in from that program, which is a good program for the next two years until housing can recover, by really holding the banks responsible for the vacant properties out here and making them put those properties on the market. That creates thousands of jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, we should consider that, at least a moratorium on it. We'll talk about it later.
Okay. Ron, just one second. Aren't we given subsidies to the builders to clean up?
Yeah, we're one of the few cities that has reduced our building fees and it's, and it's resulted in an increase in construction.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Let the record reflect that the, the mayor is taking a short break, and he's turned the gavel over to me. So, we'll finish the speaker cards on non-agenda items. That would be Mr. Abber.
I can wait for the mayor to come back from his break.
There's not going to be, this is the only time to comment, so.
What I figure. I guess the last meeting, since three of you are still here, the mayor said he's scared. Sure you guys all heard that. Mr. Chris, are you scared for your safety in the meetings or to walk the streets? I didn't think so. Mr. Mann, are you scared? Mr. Smith, are you scared? Hearing no comment from the other side, I guess the other three council members aren't scared. Apparently, our mayor is scared. So, if he's scared and has to have all this protection, then I suggest that he resign and go back into private life and, you know, not to be scared. I mean, after all, he threatens people in the paper, he attacks people at the gym, so forth and so on. The mayor just mentioned how important the lady over here was with respect to redevelopment and going to China. I know Mr. Bozigan's been to China and Mr. Lawson a couple times each, I believe, if my memory serves me correct. And other people associated with the city on, on taxpayers' dollars, and we were promised 10,000 jobs. And here we are, he promised those jobs quite some time ago. Where are those jobs? Where's one job that he promised? He was going to bring people from China over here to build a car factory. I don't see anybody breaking ground or talking about getting permits or any of those jobs because it's just broken promises and lies or whatever. That's just maybe what he does to get re-elected, but so, so forth and so on with that. I've been doing a little research lately, and after speaking with city officials, it's been told to me, and I'm sure the city manager, whoever, want to address this, that when you hire people for the city, there's drug testing required. Is that correct? Nobody wants to respond? Well, that's what I was told by your city employees. So, if that's the case, if drug testing's required, then the mayor needs to be drug-tested as well as the council members. Okay? Because the mayor mentioned in here about a year and a half ago, two years, whatever it's been, two and a half years ago, that he's a recovering addict. So, we don't know if it's from eating, drinking, drugs, sex, whatever. Whatever he's recovering from, well, you know, we, we need to get him the help. We need to get him into recovery because it seems there's always relapse. He attacks citizens very viciously, making unfounded statements. He attacks citizens physically like he did me, which is unacceptable, and we're all aware of that, and I'm sure we're getting tired of hearing it. And as soon as the district attorney's office steps up and does their job, because the sheriff investigated it and they confirmed in fact, a battery was committed on me. So, I think it's time for you guys that sit over there to step up and get that taken care of because I don't, I'm afraid to walk the streets to be attacked by the mayor again. Thank you.
Mr. Raheda.
I've come before this council many times. You are well aware of who I am. But for those who are watching, I am just a voice. I understand who I, who I am and the choices I've made in the past, which you decided to point out so blatantly and discriminatorily to use against me while also making false allegations. You called me everything but a liar. I'd just like to point that out. I have never attacked Raymond Paris, or, nor have I ever attacked any member of city council slash family, and/or, but not limiting to, mothers, bodyguards, family members, children, pets, insects, or the air we breathe. I am from the community you choose to neglect, you choose to harass, you choose to discriminate, talk down to, and bully. I can see greed. I could see arrogance. I could see lies. I could see frustration and fear of the truth. If you asked, I ask myself, if Jesus came here and filled out a speaker card, would you allow him to speak? What if Jesus Christ was opposed to how the mayor conducts himself? Would you, would you cast him out? Would you have him threatened? Would you have him arrested? Would you even have him assaulted and bullied? In the Bible, it says, "To beware of false prophets." I'm sure it applies to all who use the Lord's name in vain. And I'm just fed up as a citizen, you know? I haven't heard, I don't even know if she speaks English, okay? It's not funny. She hasn't spoke. She hasn't given an opinion about what's going on in our city, and yet she wants to be a part of it, especially the redevelopment agency. Okay? It's nothing personal, Ms. Seto. It's just business. You know, you're a lawyer, I'm sure you understand it. I address you guys in the context so you guys can really understand it. I'm just fed up like everybody else. We have really good, remarkable people coming up here and speaking, and we need more of it. I, we need things to change. I invite everybody to come here to city council and speak. I just hope they don't get harassed, arrested, or bullied like me.
That's it for the speaker cards. We have council comments at this time. Do we have any comments from other? I'm sorry, what? Okay. Council comment. Is that okay? Okay. Council agency comments. Any comments from anybody? We didn't have it down as a report, but...
I'm just going to make a comment. Just reminding everybody that there will be a Fall on Heroes ride October 2nd at Harley-Davidson. It supports the CHP, the Sheriff's Department of Corrections, the Forest Service, and the Fire Department. So, that's at 10 o'clock. If you've never seen it or been part of it, it is a great thing for these organizations. Thank you.
Very good. So, I just wanted to make a comment. We didn't have it on the agenda for agency reports, but I wanted to say that we had a sanitation district meeting that I had proposed that if it's just perfunctory to do these, you know, a few votes, why can't we just continue it till the next meeting and save the taxpayers' dollars from having a meeting? And so, this last sanitation meeting was canceled for the first time. So, we'll just continue that. So, try to save, save a few dollars here and there. So, if there's no other comments, then at this time, I'm going to recess the council meeting and we're going to go into closed session.
City attorney.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city council met in closed session under Government Code Section 54956.9A concerning the Rubin versus Lancaster matter, gave direction to council concerning the handling of the appeal. No further action was taken.
Oh, thank you. Okay, Chairman Krista.
The redevelopment agency is adjourned until Tuesday, October 11th, 2011.
The city council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, October 11th, 2011. Carol, my day is done and I'm coming home.